Concerns from my colleagues. Double dog dare ya. Or say, "Thank you."
Yeah, "Thank you."
Thank you in harmony.
One, two, three. Thank you. Director Mack, please. Nope. Director DeWolff? Roll call, please. Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously. Thank you so much. Number three, Seattle Teacher Residency Program Funding. This came before Executive Committee, March 15th, for approval. Approval of this item would provide authority for the superintendent to dedicate $251,000 for the purposes of the Seattle Teacher Residency, STR, program in the 2018-19 school year. Do I hear a motion?
I move that the School Board authorize the superintendent to dedicate $251,000 in the 2018-19 school year budget for the purpose of the Seattle Teacher Residency Program.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Before we go to questions, comments, and concerns, Ms. Broome, could you stand and be acknowledged, please, for your work on this with the Alliance for Education? Thank you so much. We ask our other partners to stand previously. Director DeWolff?
Thank you, Director Harris. I just wanted to say a special thank you to Alliance for Education and the Seattle Education Association, our folks here at SPS, and UDub. Thank you. I know there's four. Just really grateful for your work and service around making sure that we have a pipeline of teachers of color in our schools. We not only heard that question last week during the public forum, but that question was in pretty much every conversation we had with our future superintendents. So I know that all of our candidates, and particularly the one we elevated earlier tonight, are interested in this issue, and I'm so grateful for the work that you do. In a perfect world, our state would fully fund us, and we could support you with more money, but thank you for letting us give you what we can, and thank you for making sure we have teachers of color that look like the students in our schools. Thank you.
Director Geary, please.
I second, of course, the comments of Director DeWolff. And there's another aspect about it that I think is so fantastic, and we can't even monetize it. But as we create this pipeline, those teachers just bring that enthusiasm, that the new ideas that they've been exposed to out in their studies. And I can only imagine that it just reinvigorates the whole educational environment around the students with a lens of really appreciating that every single student is somebody who can learn and deserves that kind of passion. So I love this program. I have always loved this program. I wish we could have it everywhere, and we'll continue to work for that. Thank you.
Dr. Clover-Cod, the Assistant Superintendent for HR, if you would like to make a few quick comments, we'd be grateful. Thank you.
I had not planned on making any comments, except for I am deeply grateful to all of you for your support, and to the Alliance for Education, the Seattle Education Association, and the University of Washington for their continued partnership and perseverance over the last several years to make sure that this is a viable program. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns before roll call? Short and sweet, thank you very much. Director Burke, please.
I just wanted to be known that as part of the discussion around this, you know, this is a funding leverage strategy, and it's an expensive program, but it's an investment into, you know, our future educators, and therefore our future students and our system that is making impacts in ways that we can't do without very focused work. And so this contribution will be basically 25% of the operating budget for this program. And some of the concerns that have been raised, both on and off the board, is, is it sustainable? How do we maintain that? And I think the work of our partners at the Alliance for Education and the enthusiasm around this program help sustain that. But we recognize that there will be an ongoing cost. As part of the future structure of this moving forward, we're trying to put in place a sustainable model where Seattle Public Schools covers one-third of the ongoing cost, with two-thirds being covered through philanthropy and grant funding. So there is a commitment from the Board, from the district level, to continue to invest in this, along with the understanding that that investment is shared and supported by the rest of the community. So I want that loud and proud.
Roll call, please.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Next up, number four, Approval of Information Technology Advisory Committee. This came before the Executive Committee, March 15th, for consideration. Approval of this item would authorize and approve the charge of the Information Technology Advisory Committee. May I hear the motion, please? Fired.
I move that the School Board authorize and approve the charge of the Information Technology Advisory Committee with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent.
I second the motion.
Director Burke, would you speak to this motion, please?
I would love to share with my colleagues, and I'll let John Kroll fill in the details. This has been a long-term goal, need, has been mentioned multiple times by folks on the Board, has been a passion of President Harris and of myself, and I've heard it from some of you as well, that how do we engage our community in this high-tech and amazing city in informing us and helping us be better about the tech we're doing? We ask our voters for a significant amount of money, and we're grateful for their support through levies. And we have a component of funding that comes from the BTA levy, Buildings, Technology, and Academics, and a funding of our tech that comes from the BECS, the Building Excellence, because we infuse technology in all of our buildings. And how we shape that request to the community of what work we're doing, how we set our budgetary guidelines, and then how we implement that so that it's prioritized according to our strategic goals, our equity lens, all the things that we talk about, putting that amount of money into practice to really benefit students, it's pretty multifaceted. And it's hard, it's nuanced for us as a Board to make decisions on, oh, a million dollars here, a million dollars there. Technology can really rack up quickly. So having a committee that's made up of community, students, industry experts, staff, you know, across multiple staffing categories, is a great way to sort of extend our reach as a Board, and that's why this is a Board Committee. So that's really the intent behind it. Between when it came through Executive Committee and then was introduced, and now is coming to you for action, there were comments that came up and feedback from folks in the community, but also we got some really great dialogue with Director Harris, President Harris, and captured, hopefully, a lot of that, and to the point where Director Harris and I are now cosponsoring this. Tip of the hat. So I'm really excited. I think a lot of the things that came up were great improvements in, you know, transparency and ways to build the committee to be strong, sustainable, and effective. And so the document that's attached to the Board Agenda, I apologize, it's a little bit kind of red-line madness, but the resulting bar and charge, I believe, is a much more solid thing than what we brought forward four weeks ago?
Two weeks.
Was it two weeks? Two weeks. Time flies.
When you're having fun.
Yeah. So, John Kroll, I don't know if you have anything else to add, or if you want to go to questions. I defer to you.
And we need to keep it short, because we still have a number of agenda items to discuss this evening.
Yes, thank you, Director Burke and Director Harris. I was disappointed when the press left, because I thought they were here for the Technology Advisory Committee.
You ready for your close-up, are you, Mr. DeMille?
I just wanted to emphasize that we moved the start of the committee to the third week in May to allow for more engagement to reach a diverse and historically underserved group the best that we can in getting a large group of people to apply. And I think another improvement was we've added a second student, so there's room on the Board for two student voices.
On the committee, not the Board.
Oh, committee, yep.
Not so fast.
So with that, I will let Board members speak.
Comments, questions, concerns? Director Mack?
I just, if you could briefly explain the structure of, the general structure of the Advisory Committee, how those folks are going to be selected and who they report to, and I'm fully in support, because this is definitely a need.
I'll give it a try, and John, you'll get my back, so just shake your head if I get it wrong.
And I'll hurt ya.
Eighteen members, nine communities, eight, eight community, eight staff, two students. The goal, you know, all of them are selected by application. The applications are reviewed using a rubric that's developed jointly with the Executive Committee. Deputy Superintendent Nielsen and CIO John Kroll will be developing the rubric, scoring the applicants, and determining the final selections. The operation of the committee, John Kroll serves as ex officio vice, ex officio co-chair, and then a second co-chair is selected from the committee members, and it rotates year to year, whether it's from the community or the staff. So we have shared representation, sort of a shared leadership structure as well, and John kind of gluing it all together and making sure that everybody plays well.
And the agendas and the minutes of said committee will be posted on the website. The meetings will, in fact, be open. They will be at a determined time, same time every month, initially here at the John Stanford Center, but does not mean that they can't meet elsewhere, and all of that will be posted and shared.
And the meetings will begin with a budget component, much like the BECS oversight, where we say, here's the projects we're working on, here's the budgets for them, here's our progress, quick summary of that, just so we have full transparency into the projects. It will also be used as a sounding board for key technology initiatives, not all of them necessarily, but the ones that are, that, you know, merit review by the Advisory Committee will come to the committee, be discussed and debated, and then the guidance from that would be included in bars as part of the community and equity components. The committee will be trained using the Community Engagement Tool and our equity framework as well.
Director Patu, please, and then Director Geary.
Just curious, how are students actually chosen to be on this committee?
That still has yet to be developed by the Executive Committee, Deputy Nielsen, and CIO Kroll. Also, we will stagger one-to-two-year terms by drawing lots when the committee first meets, so that you will have best practices in the nonprofit world. So you will have some carryover, so we don't start over and flip the whole thing. And people are eligible to serve multiple terms. Director Geary, please.
As I recall, when this came up before, I did mention that I had done a search and didn't see anything discussing assistive technology. I do see that there is now, there is talking about different characteristics that'll be considered, along with subject matter and specific topic expertise, perenn ed tech, data privacy, enterprise business systems, online blended learning, et cetera. I think assistive technology is very specialized, and it needs to be blended into the general education environment in a way that is planned and seamless and supports students' progress in general education. And so I'm not seeing how this committee is going to have somebody who has the expertise necessary to do that kind of critical analysis of the work that the task force is doing to provide meaningful input. So I'm disappointed in that.
Director Burke?
Just to highlight, on page six, there's a list of key projects for possible consideration by the committee include, but are not limited to. The third one down on the list is adaptive technology and accessibility for our differently-abled students and community. So I think that there was definitely awareness around that as an important element, and I believe it's also built into the, sort of the qualifications or what we're looking for in terms of applicants.
And I would suggest that you, as a member of the Executive Committee that will be helping develop the rubric and choosing folks, potentially, we could give extra points and certainly double down on those concerns.
I am just concerned that if we don't specifically call out the type of people that we are looking for, there is such a historic division between that which is considered the normal business of the district and that which is relegated to special ed, that people who are in assistive technology won't really fully understand that their expertise is wanted. That is just the result, the unfortunate result of historical marginalization around that work. So I don't...
Director Burke?
I think that it's important to acknowledge that that was one of the comments that motivated the shift of the start date, which originally had been proposed as the third Monday in April, and is now the third Monday in May. And so once this, should this bar be approved, the Community Engagement Team will immediately begin to do outreach, along with us as directors, to engage folks that bring those extra perspectives that perhaps haven't been in the past. And so there's, I believe, a little bit more than four weeks. May 11th, I think, is the due date for applicants. So a fairly decent amount of time. It'll go by quickly, but I just wanted to, that's why, tell everybody, tell everyone you know.
There is nothing that would prevent us from adding an amendment, one sentence for a emphasis. Director Geary, if you so choose, we could move on to the next board action issue. If you'd like to determine an amendment, we could circle back to this. I respect your comments greatly, and if there's a way we can incorporate those comments for the substance of what you're looking for, I'd be more than happy to move the agenda along and circle back.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Number five, Amending Board Policy Number 1410, Executive or Closed Sessions and Board Procedure Number 1430 BP, Audience Participation. This came before the Executive Committee, March 15th, for consideration. Approval of this item would amend Board Policy Number 1410, Executive or Closed Sessions, and the Board Procedure Number 1430 BP, Audience Participation. May I hear the motion, please?
I move that the Board amend Policy Number 1410, Executive or Closed Sessions, and Board Procedure Number 1430 BP, Audience Participation, as attached to this board action report.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack?
We heard from a community member about the concern that public testimony on the consent agenda is difficult because of the timing of our agenda, that they can't, the consent agenda happens before a public comment, and it is action, so consent agenda is an action item, but they don't technically have the ability to speak to it before action is taken. And so I'm kind of curious about that, if there's a resolution to that challenge.
Director Burke, and then Director DeWolff, please.
I want to thank Nate Van Duser for, on, there was an amendment, that's the change that has been made, speaking to action items on the agenda, including items on the consent agenda. So they will be prioritized first. And so now, it's incumbent on us, as a Board, to look at the audience participation and what those items are, and if we see people that have public testimony for items on the consent agenda, any of the seven of us can request that that item be removed, and could, you know, could move that it be shifted till after comments.
Director DeWolff, and then we'll circle back to Director Mack.
Thank you. Now, I was also just curious, given that our public comment does start at 5:30, if there's a reason, timing-wise, for folks, if they're coming from work or other parts of the city, that just with kind of the timing around traffic and all those things, that 5:30 is just where we've kind of put the public comment? You know, if we did it at the beginning, before any of the consent, I would be concerned that people wouldn't be able to get here. So I'm just curious if it's more around kind of the balance between logistics and purpose.
Director Mack?
The timing of our public comment is, as I understand it, important so folks can get here. The concern I have around us being diligent to make sure that we flag it is, I don't think I want to leave that for us to accidentally miss. I'm sorry. I mean, we have so much information we're tracking. So just, if it is on the consent agenda and someone is speaking to that, I think maybe it's an appropriate notation on the speaking list, and that gets called out, meaning they're listed, their topic, and then perenns on consent agenda, so that it would be flagged for us, we wouldn't have to try to cross-reference.
Mr. Van Duser, would you like to respond, or give us your thoughts, please, sir?
Yes, good evening. Nate Van Duser, Director of Policy and Board Relations. That was a thought that Director Burke had as well. My initial response to that is, putting together the testimony list, there's a lot of different pieces to it, and adding one more, I was just hesitant to go there, in part because sometimes people's topic lists, we try to just take what they give us and put it on there, without trying to interpret it too much, or change the wording too much. So that was my initial reaction.
Director DeWolff?
Thank you for that. I wonder if, instead of putting extra homework on our staff, if maybe the Executive Committee, and I'm not trying to give you more homework, but maybe if the Executive Committee, given that I think it's a good idea to help us kind of flag it, if maybe that's something the Executive Committee could kind of help flag for us.
I'm agreeable to that. Director Pinkham?
Well, as you're saying, that it's taking what the people that are going to do a public comment are putting in there, can we then definitely be more specific to them and say, if you are going to address something on the consent agenda, please put that in your comments, so then be hopefully easier for you, oh, there's a consent agenda item that someone said they're going to address, because they said, I want to address a consent agenda item. So that, again, it doesn't put too much on your plate again. If you're just going to kind of copy and put it in there, then I think that'll help us as a Board, be like, oh, there's a consent agenda item that someone wants to talk to. Would that be something that may help out?
We could think about where those instructions are and figure out if there's a place to put that in. One thing that I did want to note, the concern that was raised, and the case that was raised in the email, in that case, the item was caught by directors and was pulled off the consent agenda, and I believe moved to later in the evening. And so I think part of me is hesitant to put in a lot of new structures or systems in place when, I'm not sure there's a, I think we caught it in that case, and I don't know how many cases there are in which we're not catching.
Okay, and as most dynamic organizations go, if we need to make further changes, there is nothing that stops us from doing that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Van Duser?
That's correct. And I'm happy after, when the public testimony list comes in, as directors are coming in at the beginning of the meeting, if I see something on there that looks like a consent item, I'm happy to flag that as well.
And I would suggest to the very good folks at the walls that you give us the heads up as well, because we're a team. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Director Geary, are you ready, or should we continue the agenda and circle back? Or do you want to flag it when you are ready?
I think I'm ready.
Okay, go for it, please.
So we are back...
And general counsel is coming to the box.
So we're back.
Thank you.
We have a motion for item number four.
Yeah, I was just going to, no, treat general counsel, I was just going to suggest that you, since you made the motion on the Oversight Committee, and then you jumped into a different motion, which you made and voted on, to properly put a motion on the floor, you had to go back to the original, remake the motion on the Oversight, or on the Technology Committee, and then go from there to the amendment.
Happy to do so. Giving space to our respected colleagues is tricky.
Do I need to withdraw it before I reissue it? Okay. I move that the School Board authorize and approve the charge of the Information Technology Advisory Committee with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent.
I second the motion.
Do I hear an amendment to the motion?
I move to amend the Information Technology Advisory Committee charge referenced in the bar, to add the following language to Section 3, and what I believe to be Paragraph 5, which commences the Deputy Superintendent, Chief Information Officer, and Board, and goes on from there. But I'm only adding to the very end of that paragraph that talks about the different kinds of people that will be considered for the committee, the following sentence. Specialized knowledge of assistive technology will also be considered.
I second that amendment motion. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? And Chief Jesse, are you good with this? Two thumbs up or one thumb up? Thank you. Director Mack? Nope? Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Director Burke? Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This amendment has passed unanimously.
Roll call, please, on the motion as amended.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary? Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion as amended has passed unanimously.
Thanks very much. Next up, number six, termination of ground lease at the Lake City School. This came before OPS on March 8th, for? Approval of this item would approve early termination of the lease with Lake City Professional Building LLC, in the payment amount of $6,193,000 for the Lake City School stock, to provide for increased flexibility to meet capacity needs of Seattle Public Schools. Motion, please.
Take a deep breath. I move that the school board approve the lease termination agreement for the Lake City School property, as attached to this board action report, with any minor modifications, additions, or deletions deemed necessary by the superintendent, and authorize the superintendent to take all actions necessary, including payment of a $6,193,000 lease termination payment, to implement the agreement.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack?
I don't have, Bruce, if you don't, yeah, if you don't mind, I don't have my notes from the meeting two weeks ago, but I know I had a series of questions, and I thought that we were going to include additional information in the bar. Was there, I'm trying to track back if this bar actually got edited, and that information included.
I don't believe the bar was modified, there was some additional information that was sent to the board, and I believe it was a Friday memo. There was a question about the drain issue at the property, and then a copy of the appraisal was sent out.
Yeah, I do recall seeing those in my email, I was having a hard time finding them, for some reason, but I saw them come through, but they're not here, to be, as part of that. The other piece I remember wanting clearly laid out was the rate of payback, or potential rate of payback that this would be, and maybe I did not make that request, but I think that was a question that I, that we are potentially losing $7,000 a month in income from them, and potentially making X, and payback this over the course of how much time, and?
Yeah, I think the analysis that was done was, the payback was about seven and a half to eight years, which figured the income of $66,000 a month.
So, hearing that verbally is great, however, where I'm having a challenge is that that's not here in the public information for folks to see, and to understand this transaction, and the justification behind it. So I'm a little nervous about passing this without that information in the bar and available. I'm curious what other folks think, but this is our public documents of what transpires, and?
Director Burke?
I do recall that conversation. My feeling is that since the bar does explicitly indicate that the total cost of the property is expected to be offset by lease revenue, blah, 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 within a nine-to-ten year period, so the, the payback is stated as a high level, but it doesn't actually state it as a revenue expense, kind of annual, this is under section five in the bar fiscal impact. So I'm comfortable with that at a, at a high level, I think having the information in the public record through the meeting is great, I'm-
Mr. General Counsel, to the box, please. What are our options here? I appreciate that the meeting minutes, and the public record and video create a record. Is there a appropriate way to add the documents that Director Mack rightly has concerns about, to the record after the bar is passed? Oh, good, I got you.
I'm, you know, I'm not thinking of a way, I mean, I think, we can always add something, for instance, to our webpages, or something like that, to provide the public with information, but in terms of a way to add it to the actual legislative record, when it wasn't actually presented and considered here, I'm not, I'd maybe look to Nate and see if he's got an idea.
I'll just add one thing that we've done in the past, is we've added a note to the agenda with a, with a new link, saying the board requested that this information also be available for review.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Mack?
I'm curious to get the feel from the rest of my board directors about this large amount of funds being spent on this building. Are we comfortable with this at this point? What are our thoughts? Because we have a lot of building needs in the district, this isn't going to immediately become something we're actually going to be spending $6 million, is that the number? So?
$6 million, $200,000.
I'd like to hear perspectives, and, and get a sense of, you know, are we being responsible taxpayer dollars here?
Director Geary, and then Director Burke? And then Director Pinkham?
From a very high level, it's, the responsibility in my mind is to recognize, as we have talked about before, that in reducing class sizes, we're going to need more space, one way or We're in a city that has not much open land, and that land is very, very expensive. The longer we wait, the more expensive land becomes. It seems to me that there is no way to see into the future what the exact cost of gaining flexibility around land and places to create classrooms is going to be. That's just going to be a mystery, in terms of how the economy's doing, what the city wants to do with housing, all these things. And so, making sure that within the very limited scope that we have to control availability of classrooms, that we need to move in that direction. That is, and I believe that's sort of honoring work that you, I have heard you talk about over a long period of time, and without, there is no, there's going to be no cheap or smooth way to do this, because unfortunately, land doesn't come up at ground zero of the circle of kids that we need to find new seats for, that's not how it's going to work. And then we know, even if it did, we'll have all the people going to the surrounding schools who don't want to go to that school anyway. So it's, it's, it seems to be maximizing our flexibility in the long run.
President Harris has tagged to me, Director Pinkham.
And I believe that the, we were offered to buy out this lease previously, and it was significant and less at that time, and then any, we just see this cost probably going up if we say no, and then trying to buy it out at a later date would just be more expensive, is that correct, kind of a?
Potentially, yeah, and this is our once every 10-year opportunity to purchase the lease.
And then this may be a question also, maybe for Flip with Operations, again, in the statement that Director Burke was referring to, that the total cost of real property is expected to be offset by lease revenue received by, directed, seen directly by the SPS instead of the Lake City Professional, within nine-to-10-year period, but then followed by SPS is not anticipating the need for this facility within the next seven to 10 years. But how long, if we need it at that seventh year, do we need to go in and move tenants out, remodel it, are we going to have to say, gee, we're going to need two years to do that, so we're actually maybe only collecting five years of revenue?
Yeah, Flip Hernan, Associate Superintendent, Operations and Facilities, those are all very good questions. So what this allows us to do is, if we were in the position, we basically gain control of the building, first and foremost. So the, we don't, we wouldn't have to buy the lease out from the main leaseholder anymore, we have it back. So we're gaining revenue. In that particular case, if we needed the building, and had to turn it into educational space sooner than that, sooner than, less than 10 years, let's say, correct, we wouldn't be gaining the revenue, monthly revenue, or annual revenue off of the subleases that we have in there, but we also don't have to pay for the purchase of buying out the rest of the lease, or acquiring land anywhere else, either. So we will have already purchased that, and we have the options. Then we're just moving, we're just moving into whatever the renovation cost may be for the building, and we can stage that out. We can basically figure out, okay, we see this coming our way, we didn't see it a couple of years ago, but within the next five years, we believe we're going to need an additional building in that location. We can attach fiscal impact to what that might be. But in that time, so if we have a 10-year, a nine-to-10-year payback period, basically on $690,000 a year, and we've done five years of that, and essentially, we've bought down the amount to buy at that lease by half that, half that cost.
Director Mack?
Thank you. So I want to formally make the request that those documents and that information be added to this, if this does in fact pass tonight. But the second question I have for you, Dr. Hernan, was, I noted, I noticed in the Webster documents that, so a different building, that we're also talking about tonight on a different action item, that Webster's not able to access the state school construction assistance program dollars, because it was closed for so long, so then Lake City is going to be in the same situation?
Correct.
Correct, so there's, so they, the, up to 20% or less that we don't get, I know, we don't, we hardly get anything, and that needs to be fixed, yes, I know, but, but there's some dollars that come to us from the state. Webster's not able to do it because it was a surplus building, Lake City's a surplus building, so it won't get those dollars. If that site were completely razed, and a brand-new building built, does that change the story?
It's possible. There are a couple of different ways in which we qualify for school construction assistance program dollars, and, as you know, we've been working with legislators to help change that qualification methodology anyway. So we would hope by the time that we have to action, have action on that material site, we might have a different calculation for how we might be compensated more. Currently, it's definitely not 20%. We're lucky to get overall budget, like, in the single digits, 5%, 6%, and that's optimistic.
I just want to put that in our thoughts for legislative support, too, to ensure that the designation that previously surplus buildings are no longer able to access those funds. To me, that, I don't understand why that would be part of the calculation in the first place, but, so that, just wanted to make the point there. That's all I have, if no one else has any other-
Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Pinkham, please.
And then on the rent roll, there are three vacant offices right now, would there be any intention to possibly rent those out in the short term to increase the revenue?
They've contacted us, I think they are planning on renting those out in the next few weeks.
Yeah, I see them from a size of 324 square feet up to 2,566 square feet.
Well, given the rents in South Lake Union and downtown Seattle, I would think that we could do well.
Yes.
Seeing no further comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues, roll call, please.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Seven, creation of playground redevelopment fund. This came between, before OPS, March 8th, for? Approval of this item would request the funding of a playground redevelopment project to pay for playground installations and improvements in the amount of $1 million. May I have the motion, please?
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to create a playground redevelopment project fund of $1 million, to be utilized for playground improvement projects, as described in the board action report.
Second, please.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack?
My one question is that this assumes that the million dollars will be paid back if Bex 5 passes. So do we have that already calculated on the list of potential Bex projects that's not accidentally forgotten about? I just want to make sure that we don't forget that that's part of the commitment we're making here.
We do, we have that, if you look on the menu of Bex 5 potential items, it, we haven't broken down every single playground that might be addressed, but we can certainly put a line item in the playground portion that says reimbursement to CEP fund for advancement of playground development fund. We can do that.
And, again, remind me who reviews the grants, or who is going to be approving the usage of these funds?
It would go through the operations committee, and it would be a self-help process.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Director Pinkham?
I guess for me, what we're looking at, we're still talking about the Bex 5, and what we're going to put on it. Do you think this is fair for us to say, here's a million dollars that will go on it no matter what?
So I think in conversation about this, the CEP fund, which comes from capital dollars, that's what is really fronting this. So, that money is available for the board to spend in this particular way. As we've had several conversations about previous Bex and capital levies, playgrounds have been on menus in the past, and then not survived to the end to actually get on the ballot. We've heard pretty strong support from this particular board to have that happen. One of the mechanisms for at least knowing whether or not to continue to have that happen is an evaluation in the facility condition assessment to include condition of playgrounds. So I think once the public and board see some of the disparities that we have within our school buildings, I think there'll be pretty good support in order to continue to have that happen. But ultimately, it is a board decision about how big that levy needs to be, and what needs to survive. We're just a staff going off of what we believe, we've been hearing from the board, in support of making sure playgrounds stay on Bex 5. But, the funds are covered in the CEP fund currently.
And then if, let's say, the million dollars for this doesn't make it, are cut for the Bex 5, or the Bex 5 doesn't pass, which hopefully doesn't happen, we will then still be a million dollars committed from the CEP funds.
Correct, the overall budget in CEP would go down a million dollars.
My turn. First of all, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think one of the things that has not been stated, we stated it at introduction, is that our city and county partners have ponied up for some of our schools that are not funded by PTAs and PTOs. These are struggling schools, these are Title I schools. This is about race and equity, fresh air and exercise, which we can all agree is a good thing for our student learners. I was beyond astonished that in the past, playgrounds and playground improvements were not part of the Bex levies. Stunned, and frankly disappointed, given what our values are in this beautiful city, and for our beautiful students. I will be ever so happy to report back to our county and city partners that we're going to recognize this inequity and address it. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This is what teamwork looks like, thank you so much.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number eight. Number eight. Purchase of student and staff computers for new Bex IV schools, BTA projects, K3 class-size reduction and enrollment growth capacity classrooms, opening summer 2018. This came before OPS, March 8th, for... Approval of this item would approve the purchase of student and staff computers for a total amount not to exceed $1.2 million for levy projects and the needed enrollment growth classrooms and K3 class-size reduction classrooms, opening September 2018. Motion, please.
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute purchase orders through RFP number 06792 with Dell/Thornberg for a total amount not to exceed $1.2 million plus Washington State sales tax for fiscal year 2017-18 and to take any necessary actions to implement the purchase orders.
I second the motion.
Correct. And we added one paragraph concerning the...
Could you identify yourself for the record, please? Thank you so much.
Richard Best, Director of Capital Projects and Planning for Seattle Public Schools. We added one paragraph to the bar to clarify that it is not a teacher or a student computer vice ratio, but rather, we provide computers on carts and we allow the buildings and the end-users then to determine how they would like to utilize those computers for any given day. It's done with the input of the building principal who oversees that site, so...
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Burke?
I'm not sure if it's been in my mind or if it's actually been in the public where I had been fairly adamant that I was not interested in approving additional technology purchases until we had a clear theory of action around what we were doing. That said, I want to support this, recognizing that this is essentially expansion of, or it is maintaining what we have at the same level for, it's accommodating growth. And, I will also acknowledge the work of John Kroll and his team and the board in putting together the Information Technology Advisory Committee that I think will help inform us and give us a lot of confidence that if we're putting computer hardware out in front of our students, we're doing it to enhance educational outcomes. We're not doing it just because we did it over there and we did it over there. We're doing it with intentionality and that we know with a high degree of confidence that our kids are going to benefit.
Return on investment. Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number nine, Bex IV, authorization of settlement change order number 25 to contract P 5034 with Leitig Construction Company for the Cascadia Elementary School, Lipton Springs K8 School and Robert Eaglestaff Middle School, formerly Wilson Pacific Project. This came before OPS, March 8th, for... Approval of this item would allow the efficient and timely payment of the completed work to most of the subcontractors, thereby decreasing the risk of potential future claims against the district. Change order number 25 is in the amount of $933,778 plus Washington State sales tax. Motion, please.
I move that the school board authorize approval of change order number 25 in the amount of $933,778 plus Washington State sales tax.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues, please. And for the public watching, remember that these action items were discussed in intro two weeks ago and all that video is already on YouTube and the text of the resolutions is on our website at the board page. Director Mack, please.
I'll add that we also vet these through operations and in the interim, we may ask additional questions. And this one came through for consideration and the question was something, the question that we had was a memo about the total cost, which is in here now, and I don't think there are other concerns at all, so...
Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number 10, BTA IV, approval of the project budget increase, modifications to the architectural and engineering services, A/E contract P 1416 with TCF Architecture, an amendment to the general contractor/construction manager, G C/C M, contract K 5073 with BN Builders for the Webster School Modernization and Addition Project. This came before OPS, March 8th, for... Approval of this item would approve a transfer of $6 million from the Building Technology and Academics Athletics BTA IV Capital Levy Program Contingency Fund to the BTA IV Webster School Modernization and Addition Project Budget. In addition, this motion would authorize the superintendent to execute a contract modification for $643,567 with TCF Architecture for additional design and construction administration fees in a contract amendment with BN Builders to increase the guaranteed maximum price, GMP, to $23,900. Motion, please. Take a breath.
Deep breath on this one. Save the best for last. Number one, I move that the school board approve a one-time fund transfer from the BTA IV program contingency to the Webster School Modernization and Addition Project Budget in the amount of $6.0 million. Two, I also move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute a modification to contract P 1416 with TCF Architecture in the amount of $643,567 for additional design and construction costs for the Webster School Modernization and Addition Project with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent. And, to take any necessary actions to implement the contract amendment. And, three, I further move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute an amendment to the general contractor/construction manager, G C C M, contract K 5073 with BN Builders for the Webster School Modernization and Addition Project to set the guaranteed maximum price, GMP, as defined by RCW 39.10.370 at an amount not to exceed $23,900.
I second the emotion. The emotion. I second the motion and that took everything for me to attend.
Questions, comments, concerns? Director Pinkham?
Can I also make sure that this does get correct for those that are watching? It's $23,900, not $23,900.
Thank you so much.
No, it was me. You did it right.
Director Harris?
Oh.
Director DeWolff? Please.
I can hold my question, sorry.
I ask for comments, questions, and concerns from my colleagues. That would be you.
I have enough coffee today. So, I was just trying to figure out clarification. Had some testimony today about our, a building that we had 12 years ago, we're demolishing it. Is there a way to figure out the depreciation? Because obviously, we paid for a building 12 years ago and over the course of 12 years, it... Okay, I'm going to stop talking.
Director Pinkham? And then Director Mack?
So, the additional $6 million seems primarily to be going to a new gymnasium. Was there a gymnasium part of the original Webster building that can be possibly remodeled versus building a whole new one?
There's not, Director Pinkham. A gymnasium is part of the original Webster building. There is a large covered play area. It's actually divided, kind of separated, and it's on the north side of the existing building.
Director Mack?
Mr. Best, thank you so much for bringing pictures today with this. Um... Yeah, no worries. Thank you for bringing the pictures. I had a bunch of questions get raised because there was community comments that were coming in saying, and we had it in testimony as well, about concern about this gymnasium not being appropriate for the size. The cost to me also kind of pinged a question mark of $6 million really for a gymnasium, kind of made me question mark, you know, might need to do some due diligence. And, in our conversation today and the information that you provided, there is a picture of the actual site.
Yep.
Can we flip to that really quick? So, so that gymnasium addition that you can see there is quite large and it does take up the parking lot. That parking lot used to be, back in the day, the playground. So, it will be substituting, well, there will be no parking at this site. And Magnolia Building, Magnolia School is another school. Many of the new schools that are coming up are not getting parking. So, this is, this is part of our reality and if we approve this extension, then that's part of the trade-off that we're saying we're okay with having no parking on the site. And then, there is two play areas that are built in, but they're smaller. It's not as much space as having that entire space where the gymnasium addition is.
So, Director Mack, I would just note a couple of additional comments there that you and I had the opportunity to have the conversation on. One is that gymnasiums, you know, provide rainy day recess. They're a great resource for providing rainy day recess. In addition, we went back and looked at the traffic study and I'm going to quote from the traffic study that was prepared by Hefron. It said, "Concerning, concerning the traffic study was conducted and parking around Webster was reviewed. The traffic study indicates area streets have adequate capacity to accommodate the parking demand. Event-related demands would be far less than those generated by the existing Nordic Heritage Museum that previously occupied the site." So, we do believe that our use will act, or our impact will be less than Nordic Heritage Museums when they had events scheduled at the site, so...
Director Pinkham? And then we'll circle back to Director Mack.
Can I get a date to when that traffic study was done?
I can definitely provide you with the date. I don't know it off the top of my head and I'll look to my senior project manager.
And the reason I bring it up, because with Loyal Heights, there was questions about what traffic studies they used, that it was kind of a bit older than more, you know, up-to-date ones. So, I just want to make sure that we're using a more recent traffic study.
Director Mack? And then Director Burke?
I just want to say that I sent a bunch of questions in, I got them back in my email and they were, they were shared with the board directors, whether or not they had the chance to read them. My thought is that there's still some question marks in my head and one of my thoughts was maybe I have more questions and that we should delay, could delay potentially this action for two weeks to get all of those questions answered. But, I understand that because we're looking at the 2020 opening of the school, which we have a capacity crisis in that neighborhood in the Ballard area, that that, it, it makes it difficult to actually get the work done and I respect that. So, I did have a lot of my questions answered. I've not, I'm not expressing them here, but I want to know everyone else's questions and whether or not they have gotten their concerns addressed as well. So, Director Burke? I'm sorry.
Director Burke?
So, two, two questions. One of them sort of building off the parking and the other building off some of the public testimony concerns. I think we've, we've all, you know, having our sort of ears to the ground and looking at what in, what the city of Seattle's mindset is around parking and what it's doing in terms of apartments and how those codes are working for that. This, you know, we're, we collectively as a city are leaning towards less single occupancy vehicles. And our infrastructure will be less able to support them as our population grows. So, that's, that sort of flies in the face of one of our other challenges for us personally to personalize this as a district. A lot of our teachers can't afford to live in the city. And so, when we look at having them come in to work, this particular location, I think, is particularly well-suited for driving. So, can you give me some background for a, a school of this size? What would be the typical staff, number of staff that would potentially be driving in single occupancy vehicles?
I would say there's 20 classrooms. We have 17 general ed classrooms, two special education classrooms, and an arts-science classroom. So, a good general rule of thumb is two staff members per classroom, so I would say a total of 40.
And, and the onsite parking when this work is done would be how many?
There is ADA parking onsite at the north end of the gymnasium, but it's limited to five or six stalls. It is not a substantial amount of parking. I will also note that, you know, there's a substantial amount of elementary schools within Seattle Public Schools that have little to no parking. This is a similar approach that we took at Magnolia Elementary School. Loyal Heights has very little parking. Beacon Hill has very little parking. So, there's lots of schools. I expressed to Director Mack that we went through the departure process with Olympic Hills Elementary School and that, that departure committee actually asked that we reduce the amount of parking that we were providing onsite. And I will not, I will say, parking is always complicated because when we provide parking, we are generally taking away playground space or potential playground space. And so, in our departure meetings, there are always advocates for parking and there are advocates for playground space.
The, the other question was in response to some community concerns we've heard about the gymnasium being tailored for adults. And I want to make sure that we are going ed spec first and if there is some sort of joint use or dual use thing that comes without compromising the work for our kids, can you, can you help?
So, the gymnasium here is sized similar to the schools, the elementary schools that we opened in 2016, 2017. It's similar in size to the gymnasium that's being constructed at Loyal Heights Elementary School currently and at Magnolia Elementary School. And then it's also Queen Anne, the proposed size of the Queen Anne Elementary School gym. Magnolia, Queen Anne, and Webster, should it be used as an elementary school, would all have similar-sized gymnasiums, you know, and all have similar-sized student populations.
I, I guess I'm trying to understand where the, the perception that it's adult-focused. Is it just based on size or have we stated that we're going to configure it with fixtures and equipment?
There are no bleachers in this gymnasium. There is a standard-sized basketball court with five-foot runoff on each side.
Okay.
So, which is typical for our elementary schools.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Director Pinkham?
On this map, you, again, the, hearing about an indoor gymnasium, where would this, as you said, the covered area be at?
Can we go one more slide? Well, go back to the site plan there. Covered play area is located directly right here.
Okay, I can't see your pointer on...
It's on the west side of the Gymnasium Edition.
And which way's west on the...
Webster Park is to the west of the Gymnasium Edition and between Web... Webster Park is to the west of the gymnasium addition, and between Webster Park and the gymnasium addition is a covered play area.
So that's all that existed before, when this was an elementary school? There was no?
Oh, I'm sorry, the existing covered play area, no, can you go back? The existing covered play area was on the north side of the 1908 building, and it still exists today. And in lieu of, of modernizing that and making that, because it doesn't have a good ceiling or Florida ceiling height, in lieu of modernizing that, we are actually demolishing that. The existing covered play area.
And, but in place of there, the demolishing that, you're going to put classrooms, or?
No, actually, that will become part of the site.
Part of the site, meaning what part of the site? Building site, playground site?
Eric Becker, Senior Project Manager with Capital Projects. The, once the covered play area is removed, it will become the area that says deliveries. Just, north is up, do you see where it says 1908 building? Yes, there's the pointer. You can see the pointer. That is the loading area for the school, directly off the street. And then also, once the covered play is removed, it also gives light access to all the classrooms on the north side of the building, of the 1908 historic building.
Director Mack.
So what I'm hearing from public comment was that there's a gym inside the building, or is that the, does that, or what is the space?
There's no gymnasium inside the building. It is a covered play area, open-air, non-heated, non-conditioned space.
Mr. Jackins, Mr. Jackins, you're out of order, please. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Director Mack, go ahead.
The lunchroom is small, right?
That's correct, yes.
How much does it fit? How many students does it fit at a time? How many classrooms?
The lunchroom is in blue, to the right side of the sheet. If you move the cursor to the right, yes, right in that area. There's a historic meeting room. It is a size of, there's several, Magnolia has a same configuration, Bagley has the same room. I believe the seating in that area is about 200 at maximum.
And there's an addition of an elevator?
It's 2,400 square feet.
Sorry. There's an addition of an elevator, correct, that didn't exist before?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, is that on the north side? And what is that, what kind of space is that replacing?
The elevator is, is on the eastern side of the building. Boy, it's difficult not to have a pointer. And maybe the mouse can follow me. Is the pointer?
I love this, it's like puppeteering.
The elevator is right here.
That's.
And that, that's the new elevator. There wasn't existing elevator in this location, but it did not access all the levels in the existing building.
So it wasn't ADA compliant?
It was not ADA compliant and did not access all the levels within the building. That's correct.
And the gray, the dark gray in the middle on the, yes, that? What, I cannot read what those are.
The dark gray includes all the services for the building, so more or less the boiler room, the custodial area, all the services for the building. There's an electrical room in that, I am having a hard time seeing that also. But the, the main electrical is also in that location. So just adjacent to the loading area. So that's kind of the operational portion of the building, or facilities.
Director Pinkham, do you still have questions, sir, or concerns?
So what you're showing us is the posed layout. Do we have the layout of the original building?
We do not have the layout of the original building in this, in these presentations, but I believe if you went, do we, do we have an upper level? If we could go back to the floor plan, I can try to. The original building, well, the original building here, this is the 1908 building in this area, which the pointer's.
1908 being everything but the new gym.
The, actually, the, the gym, the, the area that, the long area to the right is the 1930 building, the addition to the 1908 building. And the 1908 is kind of a, is in between the gym and the, the long element on the building. So the pointer is kind of in the, if you moved it to the right a little bit, it'd be in the center of the 1908 building. That's the center of the 1908 building, and the 1908 goes to. And there were classrooms in this level in the 1908 configuration, and, and that changed in 1930 also.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Director Burke.
So I still haven't quite in my mind reconciled the slightly awkward case where we have a community with a high degree of confidence that there is a gymnasium and, and staff with a high degree of confidence that there isn't. Is this a difference of opinion of space or size, or you can't hide a gymnasium?
Well, the building has been closed since 1980, so how it has historically been used, I would defer to the Webster alumni. When you tour that building, Director Burke, the largest space in that building today that exists is this dining area with a kitchen in the 1930 building. While that space could be utilized for elementary school students for a gym, it would not be utilized for physical education activities that occur in that program today. So.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that.
Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack.
Buildings are getting more and more expensive to build, and we are not, we're, we're losing time and we have great need. And things aren't getting cheaper as time goes on. And when I think about this building as a whole, having no parking causes me concern, not my favorite. And having a gym, super important, and having a lunchroom that's sized appropriately for 400 students, because we have that problem in buildings where we don't have enough course spaces. And so having an indoor gymnasium space for students, I know that the elementary school down the street from me has under 400 students and wouldn't, wouldn't be able to serve those, those students very well without the gymnasium. So not having a gym, and even if there was another space somewhere previously, for attempting to have this building fulfill the needs of 400 students, this, following this ed spec to me makes sense. And the additional cost that's come on unfortunately makes sense to me as well, but not for good reasons. It's just getting more expensive and the costs are ballooning. So there, there are my last thoughts.
Okay, last but hopefully not least, my comments are the same as for the playground issue. It is an equity issue. Children should have gyms. Children should have exercise. Because folks happen to live in a neighborhood that has an old building that has been closed since, did you say 1980?
1980, yes.
1980. To not give them the benefit of physical education is not fair. Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
May.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed with a vote of six to one.
Okay, we have two intro items, and at the end of the two intro items, the board will go into closed session for a 15-minute expectation. I said we have two more intro items, and after those intro items, we'll go into a closed session to discuss labor issues. Number one, approval of contract amendment with CenterPoint for interim benchmark assessments in math and English language arts for school. Based implementation of MTSS in Prens RFP 03767. This came before CNI March 13th for?
Was moved forward for consideration, because when the word "assessment" comes up, we consider it thoroughly.
You're baiting me. Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute a contract amendment with CenterPoint for an amount of $253,600 for benchmark interim assessments in mathematics and English language arts for grades three through 10.
Good evening, Wyatt Jesse, Chief of Student Support Services. So this particular item that we're bringing to your attention for hopefully, for introduction and hopefully approval, is a part of our work around developing our multi-tiered systems of support, which allows for teacher teams, both at the school level, individual grade or department level, and then also central office to monitor student progress on state standards. And really specifically at foremost is to give teachers an ability to know where each and every student is on those standards, so they can adjust their instruction to the needs of the student. This particular item was in a field test, that's why it's up for an amendment as far as a contract, went through a lengthy RFP process. This year, we had 20 schools apply to be part of the field test. That includes elementaries, K8s, middle schools, and high schools throughout the district. And through their participation, we had a lot of learning, and also has individual teachers helping to adjust some of those items. I know I sent an email, and also gave, we gave a presentation at CNI around specific items, so you can see the quality of the items. And then, moving forward, we know that we want to continue to use those district-wide. We already have 95 of our schools out of the 104 already do interim assessments, and so they're already out there, but we would like to standardize them to create scalability, efficiencies, and oversight, moving things centrally, and again, consistency of instructional services to students across all 104 schools.
Questions, comments, concerns? Director Patu.
Is this a new contract, or, I mean, is, or is it something that we've actually done before, but it's a different contract?
Yeah, this, this contract was just entered this last school year, so this is our first year working with the particular vendor, CenterPoint. And so this, this is not a previous vendor that we've worked with.
Can I have a follow-up on that?
Certainly.
So, can you actually tell me what made you decide to pick this?
Yeah, the reason we picked CenterPoint? So I, I, I have to laugh a little bit, only because there is no such thing as a perfect assessment. And so when we think about something that we can customize, CenterPoint could do that. A lot of other vendors or people who create assessments give you a package of assessment items, and then they just say, have at it. They, you, you don't change them, they're already benchmarked and normed, and you use them. The option with CenterPoint was, is if we didn't like them, we could change the type of assessments, and also Seattle Public Schools' teachers could give feedback on changing items. They don't like a particular question, for example, or they don't like a particular passage that students would read in the assessment, we can change it. And so that's exactly what we're doing with CenterPoint and why we chose them.
Thank you. Director DeWolfe, please.
Thank you, Director Harris. Just to, just to clarify for the record, can you also, just in pursuit of our racial equity goals, can you help just share a little bit about how this assessment won't further marginalize our most vulnerable students? I mean, can you share about kind of the equity analysis around it to make sure that we're not, I guess I'm just trying to be careful around particular marginalized students?
Yeah, and so that's at the, the basis of multi-tiered support. It is, it is an opportunity for us to evaluate where students are at through the school year, instead of just relying on summative assessments. When we only use summative assessments, then we just wait, and it's too, too late, a whole year's passed. And if we're really dedicated to eliminating opportunity gaps, we do need some standardized way of monitoring student progress and adjusting instruction. And that's what interim assessments allows to do, is to assess three times a year, one period, less than 15 minutes on 18 items.
So would you say that this is not quote-unquote "high-stakes testing"? Softball to you.
I love that question. This is no, no, no high stakes. This is really for individual Seattle Public Schools' teachers to adjust their instruction.
Director Mack.
I might have missed it if you said it already, but I want to make sure to call out something that you did say in our two-by-twos around this assessment tool, and that it had been evaluated with a racial bias, and that it had gone through extensive review of that, which I think the public should know and I'm appreciative of.
Yes, thank you, Director Mack. The passages in the ELA portion were not culturally sensitive. There was some language that some of the staff thought was inappropriate, and I think provided some implicit bias. And we decided to, we told back, we pushed really hard on the vendor, and they're like, no other district does this. I go, this is not how we operate in Seattle Public Schools. So we were able to change, change those, those questions out, and we're continuing to field test next year, actually, with the ELA portion. And so we've gotten double thumbs up.
And can you share that with other districts so that we can be the leaders that we are, and they can stop those questions?
Absolutely, we are, we are a leader in that. I have, I have no doubt, and I know that when we get this item back, I bet we'll get some phone calls.
Director Burke.
Thank you to, and to your team for putting this together. I think, you know, sort of building on Director Patu's question about why did we pick this? It's sort of look back a year and change into a process that included evaluating multiple vendors, field studies, pilot studies, and, and trying to refine this. I think that, as a district, we've made huge progress in a lot of areas. One of the areas that we haven't made progress is assessment, because of a lack of continuity, where, you know, we have, we had MAP, now we kind of have MAP. We had Amplify, now we don't really have Amplify. So there's, whenever we change assessment, whenever we change our assessment tool, there's a training period, there's an adoption period, there's a, we, we miss an opportunity to have that be an integral component of our system. So I know that your team has been super thoughtful about this, and I, I'm, I'm excited that the work that's gone into this gives me confidence that it can be sustained, because just like in our conversations around, we'd like to, you know, have a superintendent for 10 years, we'd like to have an assessment for 10 years as well, so that we can have that continuity. So I was wondering if maybe you could speak a little bit to how this tool will provide continuity, and maybe help me kind of contrast that with how we can customize it, because both are good, but they both have to be managed.
All right, I'm going to keep my answers short as possible, because that gets really, that could get really technical, for sure. So here's my, my quick thing about that. So here's my, my quick thing about that. One, without the, without the board's support for superintendent goal number one, we wouldn't even be here. We wouldn't even have a field test. Two, we've been able to pay teachers to come and give their critical input and some training sessions for them. Three, is that we need to be really thoughtful about this rollout. When we had 20, we had 20 schools, it, I know we're, we have some challenges if it's Audrey Roach and I leading training sessions on this work. But again, your support allowed this to work, and how we can scale it out is we are going to be starting with the math and then keeping with a field test for the ELA, right? We have to make sure that item bank is correct. How you roll that out and move into an assessment calendar, we're working with SEA on that calendar, so that we have an agreement about when is the best time to have assessments. And then we're also working with DOTS around the technology. There are still limitations at some schools, and so that part of our plan is where we're working it. Because we're not going to require three times a year for every single elementary school, because there are still some requirements like MAP through LEVI. And so we are mindful of that, and so those are the ways, because we've gone through this field test, is understand where some of the barriers are at. And instead of forcing our way through, we actually can be thoughtful about what we're asking that gives flexibility, but also moves us towards a system-wide platform. And with our new rollout of the math curriculum at the middle school level, this is a great time for us to align an interim assessment to, to give information to it. And then the high schools are actually excited about this, because they don't have a common assessments across high schools, and I know that's been well noted before around consistency between high schools.
Well, thank you for that. One follow-up? You mentioned 95 schools that are using formative assessment tools, but not this one? Or, or yes, this one?
Yeah, out of, out of those schools, so I can give you the quick, really quick breakdown is that...
You don't actually have to, I just, I just want to be cognizant, are we bringing a tool to a school that's using another tool?
Yes.
And how are we engaging with them to make sure that what we're offering them is as good or better, and that they buy into it and, and embrace it? Or, or have we done that work already?
We have, and I'm going to have Audrey answer that question, because we agreed that if she was going to stay here this late, that she would have a technical answer to that question, that we probably predicted.
Welcome.
Wow, why are there going to be talk on that? Audrey Roach, Assessment Development Program Manager. That's a really good question. What we see right now with, we just had 20 schools pilot that applied to pilot, so that's why the number's at 20. What we're seeing now is a scattering of schools using SBA interims. There, so there's, there could be up to six or seven blocks within one subject matter, and they're using all different ones. There's not one school using third-grade math, OA, Operations Algebraic Thinking Standard, and then another school in the same region is using the exact same thing. There's, it's so scattered, there's no uniform, and it's really, really hard to decide to create data on certain standards, looking at those interims. So that's one of the reasons why a common assessment, where every single school would be using it, and we could sort of, sort of calibrate that, the standards going from every single group of kids across the district, that's the power of that. So yeah, I think there will be, I think schools have been asking for common assessments within their schools, but also regionally as well. And I think there will be buy-in, for sure. Yep.
Thank you very much. Director Pinkham?
Looking at the SPS Assessments Committee meeting notes, can you address the cons that were brought up? Not a secure browser, not as linked to students with accommodations, prefer SBA interim over CenterPoint due to the interface, gives students more practice with the interface, so they are ready for the summative? How are those being addressed, or?
So the whole thing, let me see, I'm just going to scroll down. So the cons for, I'm going off memory right here, but the interface as far as, so it's going to get a little technical, so if I lose, you just slow me down, as I was a teacher, so I can kind of scaffold if I need to. But, so within the platform for TIDE, it's called, for the, for the summative assessment, the SBACK, the setting of the accommodations is very similar within that, and it stays in the session ID number, they have the same types of accommodations, but the session ID number for the SBACK is one per class. And the session ID numbers, if you were to accommodate a certain kid, it, it could look just a little different as far as what number they're putting in when they sign in. I don't know if that makes any sense. They have a different login. But it's not like, it's not public or anything like that, so the kid is given their, their class ticket. I don't know if that...
Tell me about the process for us, reeling down all the things that we're, that we're going to work on.
Yeah. So we've been working with Illuminate, so that's a platform with DOTS, on how we can sort of like centralize that process and that not be this, how the kids log in. And that has to do a lot with like something called a secure browser, and a locked browser. So I don't know how technical you want me to be, I can go on and on and on, because I kind of nerd out about this, but that's a con for sure, if, if it just puts a little bit more of a burden on a teacher in that setting, but it's something that is definitely fixable.
Okay, that's one of the things I want to get out, was something that you see could be fixable, or that a teacher can be guided through it. And the other question I have, as far as the costs, just one clarification, revised pricing structure lists about the, for planning an indoor professional development of $2,050 per day, per staff member? Is that per, per staff member? It's kind of sound like, gee, if we train one staff member, it comes out as much? But I'm assuming that means we're having one staff member from CenterPoint or Illuminate coming here to do a full-day training.
Right, exactly.
So it's just kind of hard.
One of them, not one of us. And we're only limiting it to one, one day.
Yep, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Could someone let Shawna Heath know that this will be on the bar in two weeks, given the fact that she works so very, very hard on interim assessments and learned this up? Before your time?
No, no, I just was like, she's back.
No, no, she's in Brazil, isn't it?
No.
Fair enough. Number two, BTA for, BEX for, award construction contract P5098 to CDK Construction Services, Inc., for the Dearborn Park Elementary School Roof Replacement and Seismic Upgrades Project. This came before OPS March 8th for...
Consideration.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to enter into a construction contract in the amount of $440, $444,500 for the Dearborn Park Elementary School Roof Replacement and Seismic Upgrades Project. Mr. Best?
Yes, so this project was bid on March 13th, 2018. We received four bids. CDK was the low responsive, responsible bidder. This will replace the existing roof at Dearborn Park International School with a three-ply, or excuse me, with an asphalt shingle composition roof. And then there is a couple of flat areas at the school that will, we will be using a three-ply SBS membrane. So we will also be enhancing the seismic diaphragm of the building as we replace the roof.
What does that mean? Seismic diaphragm?
Yes, the, we'll be tying the roof together for, such that the roofing materials will lay on top, but it'll all be, act as one roof, so...
Thank you.
Yep.
Comments, questions, concerns? Director Mack?
I just want to note that the couple of issues that we had asked to be added to the bar have been added, the correction of the BTA to the BEX and the actual dollars amount have been added.
So, I'm thinking of back when we, when Director Blanford headed up OPS and I was on the committee. And we had talked during one of the meetings about including just a little bit of history on these big projects with regard to buildings, so that we would know the last time...
The roof was replaced?
The roof had been replaced, so that it wasn't somebody in the audience who would be informing us that the roof had been replaced only such-and-such period ago, and there might be, it might still be under warranty, you know, those issues. It would just give us a sort of historical snapshot that over time, 10 years from now, when they pull this bar to look at the last time, we could get a running tab of how often are we replacing these roofs? And, and we talked about the fact that it, it should be something we know, and it wouldn't take up a lot of room in the bar, it was just really a, a piece of information for those who would have some questions. And so I don't see that here, was that considered and not included for any reason?
No, we could definitely add that. I will note that we did read, the Ming Analysis Report is really clear on this school, that this building is at the end of its useful life. Our facilities department personnel are also very clear that this roof is at the end of its useful life. And so, but we can add that prior to this going to action as to when it was last replaced.
Yeah, that was just something we talked about doing on, on these kinds of projects on every bar that came up, because it was just helpful for the board to understand, since we have so much rotation, and even the committees themselves don't have consistency necessarily. So I would, I would appreciate that suggestion being moved forward.
Yep. And I will note, and Director Geary, you've probably heard me say this before at the Operations Committee, that Seattle Public Schools had a approach of replacing portions of roofs, and so sometimes that can get confusing, but we'll def, definitely look at this and identify when these roofs were replaced.
Thank you.
That would also enhance the concept of regular maintenance. And it would also tell us about the roofs that are 40 years old that were rated useful lives for 20. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, we will move to the boardroom for a closed session, expected to last 15 minutes. Thank you so much, everyone.